Want to call the order, will allow it?
Hi, call to order tonight's school board meeting on Monday, March 25th, 2024. I'm welcome everyone here tonight. Thank you for coming out here on spring break. I am we're happy to be serving. I left my ballgame tonight and my father and all looked at me and said, thank you for serving. So I remember my days in law enforcement and this is a service that we're doing and providing for our community. And I just want to thank our school board members for all the work and time that you put in for this as well because this is more than just a 40 a week, 40 hours a week type of job. We put in a lot of hours in this and we're grateful that God has chosen us at this moment in time to be able to do this. So I'm tonight, our first thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Do I hear a motion to do that?
I move to approve the March 25th, 2024 agenda as presented.
Thank you. Ms. Cave, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any comments or discussions on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes, all opposed, no. Motion passes five oh. Next on agenda tonight is a moment of silence and those who would like to join me, we're going to take this moment to have a moment of silence tonight. Thank you. Next, if you will, stand with me as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First thing on our agenda tonight is board highlights and I'm going to start again with Ms. Ashley Burgoyne on the end.
No, let me see, there we go. So one thing that I got to do the past couple of weeks was, and Jackie helped me out here, was a regional FFA company, area competition, which is my first kind of event that I did with FFA, which I thought was really, really cool. I was super impressed by the kids and like very, very, very inspired by them, all their hard work and professionalism and just, it was really cool to see, excuse me, how all of that works. And it was across the whole fairgrounds. So I didn't get to see everything because I was in one place, but it was really cool to see how the kids went from place to place. And it was just a really fun event. I look forward to supporting the FFA more. I think that's definitely an awesome thing that our community can offer. So the other thing I wanted to highlight was the power outage. Our school, so my kids, you know, they go to Linville Edom, and our school started flickering power, I think it was the 21st. And then we were without power, I'm sorry, it was the 20th to the 21st, but we were without power all night through till about 10 a.m. the next day. And so I just wanted to highlight that, you know, our, I'll be honest, we were late to school. We struggled, right? We were brushing our teeth with headlamps and bottled water and things like that since we had no power. And we were late. And so I just saw the staff at my kid's school, and I'm sure it was all over Rockingham County, were just so awesome and kind and patient with the kids. And I started thinking when I got home, like, a lot of these teachers didn't have power and a lot of these teachers couldn't make a cup of coffee in the morning or couldn't take a shower. And so I just wanted to shout that out because they were super, super kind and forgiving, especially since we were late, I'm sure other people were late too, but and really supportive. So thank you guys.
I was just thinking that it's really hard to narrow down our highlights. So when we miss some of the really important events, it's definitely not on purpose. It's just we're so busy in the two weeks in between meetings that I have to sort of, you know, keep everything in my head we've done. So we don't leave things out on purpose. But a couple of things that I've been doing the last few weeks, I attended the Teacher of the Year awards at the Sims Building, and that was really awesome. And my takeaway from that was something that Ms. Roderick at Coveron Elementary said, she said, teaching is a work of heart. And I think that every single teacher would concur with that. And I just thought it was a powerful statement. I thought, you know, I really, I want to remember that and share it because I thought it was really good. It really touched me. And got the opportunity to go to the Rockingham County Young Farmers Banquet. Ms. Sarah Kaiser Elton Middle School invited us to go to that, and that was really good to see. I got to see Jacob Schiflett, who I led in youth group many, many, many years ago, and he has just grown into a fine young man. And just happy to be in Rockingham County where I got to sort of see his growth and love his family. And so it was a good time there. It was good to see some of the East Rock students that were there serving. And we just have such a wonderful group of people, kids and parents and faculty alike. And let's see, the food truck festival at East Rock over the weekend, I hope you guys got to go to that. We were super busy that day, but we made a point to run in there and grab food, support our school and had to run. Unfortunately, we didn't get to stay and enjoy the music, but hope they did really well with that. And I got to go to the McGaughy's Elementary School cafeteria and work last week or a week before, I can't remember now. But that is just, one of my favorite things to do is be in the cafeteria with those kids. They're just the cutest little things when they ask for, you know, ketchup or milk. And I just really enjoy serving in that way. It's just, it's one of my favorite things to do. But I also just by happenstance was there when they had their fire drill, and I had been at Elton Middle School when they did their tornado drill. So, you know, we ran on, really all three of us on school safety. And it's so important. And so to get to be in the schools when they're having these drills and see how well organized they are, it means a lot to me. And I was asking a lot of questions afterwards, and I asked, I'm like, what time is it? You know, how long did it take us to get out of the building? And they just even had some different things they were doing with teaching teachers how to pull the fire alarm and things that day. And it all went really quickly. And even Mr. Baker was a part of it, I think, you know, kind of sobbing for someone that was out. And so it was just, it was really cool to get to listen when they would say, I'm so and so, I'm here with this class. And they'll say, all clear, you know, for each section. And it's just even in a drill where you know it's not real, but you listen to him say that all clear, it's like you get this feeling of relief. And so safety is just something that's, you know, it's really important to me. And so, good job, Mr. Baker. I just, I enjoyed that. And thank you for taking care of the kids there and just running a well-oiled machine. I think that's it.
Did you see Donnie?
Thank you. I did see him.
We love you, Donnie. Thank you, Ms. Cave. Ms. Hurst?
Um, I want to highlight the Pence musical. They, last weekend or the weekend before, I don't remember which, but they put on Frozen Junior, and it was incredible. The kids did a great job. I knew a lot of heart, time and energy went into getting that production ready, and the kids just shined. They did such a good job. And TA, get ready because you've got a lot of really great vocalists and actors coming your way in the next couple of years. It was amazing to see how much talent Pence Pence has sitting there just in singing. So they did a great job. And then I also want to just highlight a trip I took to Rockingham Academy. I just went out and had a tour, and I happened to be there on 3/14, so it was Pi Day. And Ms. Dean had gotten pie to serve all of the students and faculty there. And had a really great tour, seeing what sets Rockingham Academy apart from some of our other schools and how they do things just a little bit differently to meet the needs of different learners' styles. And just had a really great time. And I'm so thankful that we have options like Rockingham Academy in our division. And I think that's a really great thing for for our kids because not all kids learn the same way. And so we have to have different ways to approach learning for our students. And Rockingham Academy is a school set up just for that. So just want to highlight a good job that's happening out at Rockingham Academy.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Ms. Lor?
Thank you. Yes, like Ms. Burgoyne, I was at the area rally, the FFA area rally. That's basically all the, all the FFA chapters in the Blue Ridge area. I always get it wrong because we used to be Northern, but now we're Blue Ridge. But I was there to talk about Ag Science Fair and promote Ag Science Fair, and Ms. Burgoyne was there to judge present or public speaking. And full disclosure, I want to say a big thank you. She did not know this, but my niece, Miley Finley, was the winner of the Extemporaneous. Yeah, see, you didn't even know. But so all of our winners, including Creed, Prepared Public Speaking, Tractor Driving, all the winners from that will move on and compete at state in, most of them in June. So yeah, congratulations to all of our kiddos and good luck to them moving on. I also was able to attend the the CISA meeting, which is Special Education Advisory Committee, right? Dr. Schiflett, we were able to attend that. And they, there was a nice question and answer period with the superintendent. I want to thank him for making time to do that. That was a really great meeting for me. Also, I was able to go to Broadway High School and join the Ag Spanish Class Fusion class and hear presentations about salsa that they made. And we got to taste salsa and we got to judge the salsa. And it was like a shark take kind of thing. It was so much fun. And Officer Robinson and Ms. Oh from the Spanish Department joined us. So that was, that was a lot of fun. It was nice to, nice to spend some time with the kids. And I also kind of apologize for not being as polished as I normally am and kind of maybe a little tired as we go through the night. I attended bus driver training today, and I will, I'm, I will be working on getting my bus driver license so that I can hopefully drive like field trips and things. But also, it gives me a really good understanding of what we're asking our bus drivers to do and all the, the way that our policies impact our bus drivers. So that's really exciting for me. Plus, I get to learn how to drive a great big bus. So everybody watch out. And then finally, I want to just take a moment to wish my father, Jack Osborne, a happy 85th birthday today. I know he's at home watching, and Dad will celebrate later, I promise. And I love you. So that's all I have for tonight, but thank you.
Happy birthday, Dad, 85. Congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Lor, and Dr. Schiflett.
So the way I understand it, if you don't like how Mrs. Lor drives, stay off the sidewalks.
Yes.
Just kidding, Ms. Lor, you'll do a great job. You're used to driving those big farm tractors and wagons. So you, you got it under control. But being the bus-
People aren't watching. So I don't know how I'm going to be doing this with like 50 kids on the bus with me, but we'll learn. It'll all be fun. It'll be an adventure.
Yes, there definitely will be people watching. And the, the key to being a great bus driver is you have to watch those people as you watch the road. So it's one of the most, it's one of those most, one of the most challenging jobs that we have as a school bus driver. So shout out to all our bus drivers. I too want to just say Frozen Junior at Pence Middle School was awesome. I really enjoyed that performance. It was neat to see all the young kids, the young girls dressing up as one of the characters. Elsa, yes, thank you. I'm not, it's been a while since I've watched the actual Frozen, so forgive me. But the singing was phenomenal. They did a great job. And as well, I had an opportunity to be at the Teacher of the Year celebration. And once again, I want to say thank you to our Teachers of the Year. In my opinion, they're all Teachers of the Year for coming in every day and giving their best effort. They do many things behind the scenes that even students do not see, right? Lesson planning, grading, communicating with their colleagues, with parents. And so I just want to give a big shout out to our, our teachers as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schiflett, and thank you, board members, for your involvement and everything that you're doing inside the schools. And I had an opportunity, but quite a few things I did, but the biggest thing that stuck out over the last two weeks was at our last board meeting at Montevideo Middle School, I had an opportunity to meet a couple of Spotswood kids and had an opportunity to actually go to Spotswood and meet with them. And so we had a great conversation. We talked about our theater and how we can support our arts department and things that are going on. So they were great advocates, Dr. Schiflett, for the arts and especially for theater. So we're, we're looking to see what we can do. And, and it's real important to us. But I really enjoyed the dialogue and I really enjoyed just getting up there, getting around the kids and talking with them because a lot of times in the public meetings, there's a lot of drama that happens. And to actually go up there and talk with the drama kids that don't have all that drama was really good. And so, yeah, it really just put things in perspective of what we're doing. And I really appreciate the ones that reached out to me and, and asked to meet with me. That meant a lot to me, and that was a big highlight of mine over the past two weeks. So thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to head into our action items. And first on our agenda tonight is to, is to approve the minutes for March 11th, 2024. And let's go ahead and do the minutes for March 18th, 2024.
I move to approve the minutes of the March 11th and March, March 18th, 2024 meetings as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Burgoyne. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes, all opposed, no. Motion passes five oh. Next on our list tonight is field trips, and I believe Dr. Schiflett has that.
Chair Carlson, board members, I have several field trips for your consideration. Spotswood High School, TSA State Leadership Conference, May 2nd through the 5th, seven students, Hampton, Virginia. FFA State Convention, June 24th through 27th, 15 students, Virginia Tech, Blacksburg, Virginia. DECA International Conference, April 26th through May 1st, three students, Anaheim, California. Model General Assembly, April 11th through the 13th, six students, Richmond, Virginia. Elton Middle School, FCC LA State Leadership Conference, April 11th through the 14th, 10 students, Virginia Beach. East Rockingham High School, DECA International Conference, April 26th through May 1st, two students, Anaheim, California. And Broadway High School Model, Model General Assembly, April 11th through the 13th, four students, Richmond, Virginia. And I do recommend approval of these field trips.
Board members hearing superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion to approve that recommendation?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the field trips as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Burgoyne. Any questions or comments concerning the field trips? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes, all opposed, no. Motion passes five oh. Next on our agenda tonight is policy revisions. I believe, Dr. Schiflett, you have this as well?
Yes, at the last school board meeting, I presented two policies, BG and GBD regarding board staff communications. And I recommend that the school board approve the proposed policy revisions for, for tonight.
Board members hearing superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion to approve that?
I move to approve that recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions, comments about the policy revisions? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes, all opposed, no. Motion passes five oh. Next on our list tonight is the 2024, 2025 school operating budget.
Chairman Carlson, board members, at a special meeting on March 18th, I presented our operating, school operating budget for the 2425 school year. And I asked the school board to approve the 2024, 2025 school operating budget. That's funds 103, 201, and 202 totaling $176,376,914 as presented at the March 18th, 2024 meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Schiflett. School board members hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion to approve that recommendation?
I move to approve the 2024, 2025 school operating budget totaling $176,376,914 as presented by Superintendent Schiflett at the March 18th, 2024 meeting.
Thank you, Board Member Cave. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any question, comments on this from board members? I know this has been a long process, and I feel like I'm first time in three years being on the board and going over this process that we've, I'm, I have noticed, not only because I'm the chair this year, but I've noticed I'm a lot of things we didn't do beforehand. And so I want to appreciate, I want to say thank you to Dr. Schiflett for your consideration and your thoughtfulness. You know, we began talking about this at the end of last year, Ms. Lor, and before, a little bit before the end of last year. And Dr. Schiflett talked about how he was going to, one of the first things he was going to do is talk to the new school board members when they came on about the budget and what they would like to see in the budget. And I'm, it was my recollection, recollection that we've said, we want to do what's best for our teachers. We want to do what's best for Rockingham County Public Schools. So we didn't really have personal agendas going into the budget. We wanted to make sure that our schools are well-funded and our teachers have what they, what they need. And our class sizes was one big thing that Ms. Hurst brought up a lot during budget time. So I want to appreciate, I want to say thank you to Vice Chair Hurst. And I don't think that we quite understand, and sometimes because of so much of the negative publicity that the board has received, especially from the media, that we don't really see the gem that we have sitting in the vice chair position this year. And Ms. Hurst's experience as a 15-year veteran teacher, especially in Rockingham County Public Schools, and her educational background in reading really has provided a lot of insight and help for the board that wasn't there in the past. So I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for the strong advocacy that you had for teachers, for class size, for things that I'm, that you brought up that wasn't brought up in the past. So thank you so much for taking time away from your family. I know that has been a big deal for all of us. I'm missing a ballgame tonight with my child, and I know the rest of the board members, they miss things with their children and husbands as well. So thank you guys so much for how much time you put into it. And I will yield the floor to anyone else who would like to add anything right now. Hearing none?
I just want to also say thank you to Dr. Schiflett and to Justin Moyers, who put in a lot of hours on this and walked new board members through our first budget season. And I'm really pleased with some of the things that we were able to collaborate on and some of the things that are going to come out of this budget season. And it was really, I think, probably a really tough one. And I don't think we even realized how difficult it was because we, we started with what looked like eight million less than what we were anticipating just to come back and break even with what we had been spending. And so I feel like there's a lot of collaboration and teamwork approach to making this budget what it is today. And I'm, I'm pleased with that. So special thank you to Dr. Schiflett and to our finance officer, Justin Moyers, who, who helped guide us through that process.
I would like to say that after we got back from, I'm, meeting with the board supervisors and folks from the county here, we had a task to go back and cut $3 million out of our budget. And that was hard to do. It was difficult to look at things that we've been funding, things that's been going on, and then to look at what are we going to start cutting. $3 million is a lot of money when we're looking at it. And one thing that Ms. Hurst brought up that day, and I hope you don't mind if I share this, but very first thing she said when we got back, and I love this, that she said it was, I'm, the very, the very first thing that was brought up to us when we first started the budget was that we wasn't changing the budget of last year's budget and the last year's school boards that set the budget. And when she came back, she said, I'm, that was last year's budget, that was the old superintendent's budget, and that was the old school board's budget. We have a new superintendent, and we have a new board. And so we, there are things that we want funded. And so we made sure they were funded, and we had to start from scratch, kind of looking at what we wasn't, $3 million is a lot. So thank you for, for your, for your help on this. It's really, it was, it meant a lot. So thank you, Dr. Schiflett. And I'm hearing no more comments from board members. I'm, all those in favor in passing this year's school operating budget, say yes. Yes. Was that a five oh or no?
Well, you haven't called for no yet.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, all those opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes four one. Next on the list is, oh, I'm sorry. I'm, yeah, there we are. Next on the list tonight is the Language Arts Textbook Adoption by Ms. Kim Tate.
Chair Cross, members of the board, Dr. Schiflett, on behalf of the K-5 Language Arts Textbook Adoption Committee, I am here to recommend Amplify CKLA for the board's approval as indicated by the Virginia Literacy Act.
Chairman Carlson, board members, I do recommend that the school board approve the Amplify CKLA program as the K-5 literacy curriculum as selected by the Elementary Textbook Adoption Committee and presented by Mrs. Kim Tate, Supervisor of Language Arts.
Thank you, Dr. Schiflett. And board members hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion for the recommendation?
I move we follow the superintendent's recommendation to adopt the Amplified CKLA program as the K-5 literacy curriculum as selected by the Elementary Textbook Adoption Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Lor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions, comments?
I have one, or maybe two.
Okay.
Let's see. Can you share with the board what, what it was you liked about this curriculum over all of the others? What made this one stand out? Because you had a lot of different committee members.
I'll share what the committee liked about it. I was not necessarily a part of the decision. They developed a set of priorities prior to selecting the textbook. Those included to have a clear phonics scope and sequence, contain rich, high-quality texts that support comprehension, knowledge building, vocabulary, genre balance, and morphology, to contain assessment components which are diagnostic, formative, summative, and aligned to the Virginia standards, provide user-friendly resources for both students and teachers, to offer tiered instruction materials for small group, English learners, and special education, and to provide high-quality technology, including slide decks as possible. Their assessment of CKLA included the following. It contains an intervention toolkit. It contains Google slides that can be adapted and revised for comprehension and phonics. It has an English Language Arts Companion Program. It supports Knowledge Matters, which is the recommendation of the Virginia Department of Education. It includes parent letters for each unit to help families know how they can help their children at home. It includes vocabulary instruction, high engagement, strong unit overviews, novel studies with novel guides, decodables that spiral skills, and digital readers in addition to physical text. It also has a vocabulary app, which the committee felt was both appropriate and appreciated.
That sounds like a lot. And it sounds amazing. Like they've got, there's a lot of, I took a look at some of the things that were over at Central Office, so I've had a chance to review some of what was there. What are, are there any programs or things that we're using now that once we purchase this set of curriculum that we will no longer need to continue funding? Or does that make sense? Like,
I don't know.
For example, like vocabulary. I know some teachers use vocabulary or-
We do not support that at the Central Office necessarily now. It could be supported through, for English learners or through special education. And I am not directly involved in their budget, so I don't want to speak to that. But in terms of what we have now, most of what we've created has been developed by our teachers with help from the coaches as far as a curriculum is concerned. The intervention, the approved interventions will not be available from the Virginia Department of Education until June, their final approval list. That's when we expect it. We have every reason to believe that most of the things that we've already purchased, including Spire, also including Ufly resources. And we think that most of those things are going to, oh, and, oh, it's gone out of my brain, but most of those things are going to be part of the approved interventions. But the law indicates that we follow the curriculum with fidelity. We're going to do our best to do that. We'd like to be able to get a hold of it quickly because we need- We'd like to be able to get a hold of it quickly because we need to develop an implementation plan to make it as easy as possible, you know, as a teacher, to be able to implement it in a way that is both appropriate, reasonable, and doable. So we want to be able to work with the company pretty quickly to provide multiple opportunities for trainings, if possible. That would be part of our contract so that teachers would have some choices as when that could happen, maybe even as soon as the end of the school year, if they chose to take that opportunity over the summer, and then naturally when we come back in the fall. The committee had some recommendations for implementation as well, and so we will certainly take that into consideration, and many of them volunteered to be part of the development of the implementation.
Are you, like, right now thinking implementation would be full, starting August, back to school, or are we going to, like, kind of bring this in in phases?
The law says...
All in.
All in. However, we need to show people grace.
Yeah.
And so that's why it's important for teachers to be a part of the implementation plan. So, but one of the things I think that the committee really emphasized was that what they saw in CKLA Amplify is not that different from what we've been doing over the last three years. So they felt, too, that it would be an easier implementation because teachers would be pretty comfortable with the focus. I think pace is going to be where we will struggle, and again, we will support each other and give each other grace.
Yeah. Are there other programs now, such as, like, Writing Revolution? I know the counties has been looking at that, and I forget the name of the other one that was kind of comprehension-focused. Are those kind of going to go get tucked away now as we focus on?
I mean, the Writing Revolution is not necessarily a program. It's a way of approaching writing K-12, depending on what a child needs. So again, I think that's part of a philosophy, but we need to, anything we do outside of the curriculum would need to integrate with the curriculum. And if it doesn't, then I need, I think we need to talk about that with our teachers, with our curriculum leaders, to determine what makes sense.
So, final question. I apologize.
No, it's fine.
So with letters implementation, it's a pretty rigorous, for those of you that don't know, letters implementation and that training is pretty rigorous for teachers. Are we still, and with this program is a lot of training, most of our teachers have been through letters training, but you're still going to have new teachers who never have been through. So how are we going to, are we continuing with letters training in addition to? Are we getting ready to whomp some first-year teachers? Do you see where I'm going with this?
Right now, the Letters Course of Study is a substitute. Our teachers don't have to take the required VDOE Canvas course that our reading specialists are taking this year because they've been through the Letters Course of Study. At this time, we are thinking we will continue that. That was the recommendation of curriculum leaders and leadership. And we just, last week, had a meeting, a literacy meeting with our university partners and local school systems. I think our university partners are working with us to prepare our incoming teachers. And so it will be a year-by-year decision, I think, as to where we go with the Course of Study. Because again, letters is not a program. It's a professional development course of study that helps everyone be on the same page as to literacy, from the beginning in phonics, phonological awareness, phonemic awareness, all the way through to reading, writing, and comprehension. It's complex. And so all speaking the same language, I think, helps us move a little more easily. And when we collaborate, we understand from the special education teacher, the EL teacher, our reading specialist, and our classroom teacher, we're all speaking the same language about students and their assessments and their interventions if needed. So at this point, we would plan to continue that, at least for the near future.
So you're going to continue with letters?
The Course of Study, which is teacher professional development. Yes.
We're going to continue this coming year with that?
Yes, that is the plan at this time.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, say yes. Yes? All opposed, say no. Motion passes five oh. Thank you. All right. That gets us into our informational items, and our first on our agenda, and I'm real excited to hear about tonight, is our JMU Lab School for Innovation and Career Exploration.
Chairman Cross, Dr. Shiflett, members of the school board, thank you for giving me and Dr. Zoo Gelder a few moments of your time to review our lab school program that we have coming into two of our high schools this coming school year. I'm very excited about this program. A few years ago, Dr. Shiflett looped me in with all of this. So I've been a part of this program and watched it evolve. It's been in many different, it's evolved into what we have today for the last few years. So I'm really excited from being a part of this program as the principal at Broadway to now in this position to continue working with the lab school. So this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Zoo Gelder.
Thank you, Ms. Abernathy, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Shiflett, thank you for having us back before you to talk about the lab school and where we are with it. Very exciting updates for you, and some buzz has already been created in the community regarding this. So just a brief overview, you may remember that in 2022, the General Assembly put appropriations behind this, supported by Governor Youngkin. And so the lab school legislation allowed for funding to support innovation across the Commonwealth. And universities were given the opportunity to apply for funding in partnership with school districts. And so we came to Rockingham County, and Rockingham County embraced this concept with open arms. So our lab school partnership, which was approved in January by the State Board of Education, and thank you, Mrs. Lohr, for being at that meeting when we got approved by the Standing Committee of the Board of Ed. Our concept that was approved is a partnership, and it truly is a partnership between JMU, Rockingham County Public Schools, and Blue Ridge Community College. And what we did was, we came together as a group and said, how can we bring together the talents of all three of these very important organizations to benefit the community? So during this, this is a high school, and it will start in ninth grade at Broadway High School and East Rockingham High School. So just last week and the week before, sorry, I'm not used to being too tall for a microphone, so. All right, there we go. Is that better? Can, okay. Yeah, I need to enjoy this new height that I've obtained. So we have been already in the Broadway community and also at East Rockingham High School. We started with an eighth-grade presentation at the feeder schools, so Hilliard Middle School first, Montevideo, and then, of course, Elton Middle School. And then the following Thursday nights of those weeks, we presented this to the parents. So you're actually hearing the parent presentation that parents in the community have already benefited from hearing. This has also been translated in Spanish, which is on your board docs. And in addition to that, we've translated this presentation in Russian, Ukrainian, Arabic, Kurdish, and I believe that's it for now. But our lab school concept, this partnership school, is an opportunity for high school students to explore careers. And so the way they will explore careers is by bringing in all of these wonderful people from the community into the classroom. And it starts with the way the classroom will look. So rather than you going to English from this time to that time, and then world geography from that time to that time, and then health and PE from that time to that time, we actually will have teachers from all of those subject areas together at East Rock and at Broadway. I've met the teachers. They're phenomenal. They're very enthusiastic, very excited about this. In addition to that, JMU professors and Blue Ridge professors, along with industry experts, will be putting together a team where they solve problems in the community. So it might be clean water. And so if clean water is the issue that they want to solve, the health and PE teacher will be working with the environmental science teacher, as well as the world geography teacher and the English teacher, to bring all of those standards of learning together to solve this community problem. Now, because this involves industry, then an environmental engineer might also be there to say, this is actually what we do to solve clean water in our industry. Blue Ridge Community College professors will also be there to help the teachers understand more of the content and to help the students see examples of people from higher ed in their classes. Same with JMU professors. And that's just one example. During this lab school, so I mentioned, it starts in ninth grade at Broadway and East Rock, and then it expands to 10th grade at those two schools while we bring on Turner Ashby and Spotswood High School. And those principals are already on board and have been involved in this process. When they do ninth and 10th grade in this kind of fused, mega-fused setting, which I think you mentioned about the fused courses at Broadway, which is why Mrs. Abernathy has been such an asset to this work because of her leadership at Broadway, you'll see that mega-fusion happening at those two schools in ninth and 10th grade, along with industry, along with the universities and community college. When they get to 11th grade, they'll have some options. They could say, this was fun. I'm going back to my traditional high school setting. Or they could say, you know, I want to keep learning more about what I've learned from industry and the careers in exploring these. So they have an option. They could go to Blue Ridge Community College. They could enroll in dual enrollment at Blue Ridge Community College. So the tuition is covered by the lab school funds, which are supported by the state. So this is at no cost to the school division and at no cost to the students. Or they could say, I want to explore more deeply the careers that are happening at JMU. And so they could take courses at JMU in the same manner, and that also would be free of charge, included with the lab school funds. If they wanted to go to Massanut and Tech, just like planned, they could do that as well, or they could choose to go to governor's school. So this is a half-day model. One of the reasons why we chose English, World Geography, Environmental Science, and Health and PE is because ninth graders have to take those subjects anyway. So why not, during half of the day, these students give, get an opportunity to explore all these subjects with this team approach, with industry experts, to really learn using hands-on projects and problem-solving? So lots of hands-on learning in this experience. The classroom setting won't look the same. We have funds to bring in cool furniture and technology and all those great things that come with the innovative pieces of the funding that Governor Youngkin gave to us. Because there are more adults here, there's an opportunity for smaller class sizes. So just the teachers to students, the ratio is about 1 to 15, no more than 15. But in addition to that, the JMU professors, the Blue Ridge professors, the industry experts, paraprofessionals, and also students from the universities who are studying, whether it's teacher education, or social work, or public administration, whatever it is, they will also be able to be in the classrooms, learning from this, and the students learning from them. In addition to that, as you can imagine, when the governor released that we got the lab school approved, industries have been banging on the door. They want to be a part of this. And so the students at these schools will have an opportunity to engage in apprenticeships and internships, especially when they get to 11th and 12th grade. These are just some of the professions that they could participate in, but this is not limited to what you've seen on the slides. So I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Abernathy so she can explain what the schedule will look like for kids.
So Dr. Zoo Gelder already talked a little bit about the schedule, but here's just an example schedule for ninth and 10th grade. And again, for ninth graders coming in next year to Broadway and East Rockingham, the ninth-grade lab school classes are English, English IX, Environmental Science, World Geography, and Health and PE. Again, all four of those classes are required of all students, whether they're on a standard diploma or an advanced diploma. You might wonder why math isn't on that list, and that's because our students coming in math in ninth grade are in so many varying spots in their math progress. We want to make sure that this opportunity is available for all of our students, every single ninth grader, even if they're EL or receive special education services. Whoever does sign up and come into this program will make sure that they have the required services and the needed services in that classroom with them. So that's why math is not a part of this program. But these are the four classes. And again, Ms. Lohr already talked about the fusion class. There are fusion classes at all of our high schools that they run. And as a quick snapshot of that, that means that two classes are integrated together. They are being taught together, their standards are integrated together, the two teachers plan together, and they cross over. So it could be, like she was mentioning, the Spanish III and Ag Leadership Class. There's a Construction and Geometry Fusion Class. There's English X and Debate. There's Government and Current Affairs, and there's lots of these fusion classes that are going on out there. And actually, one that East Rockingham started this year is already Environmental Science and English, Environmental Science and Health and PE IX. And I understand that is going very, very, very well. And so we're very excited about how they've already fused that together. So now they will be working with the other two teachers in English and World Geography to see how all four of those will integrate and be an interdisciplinary approach with all four subjects integrated with each other. So this is what a sample schedule will look like. So we are on a block schedule, and then even odd day. So half of the day coming in in ninth grade, half of the day is going to be a lab school. That's where they're going to be with all four classes, four teachers, and then anyone else who's coming in that particular day, whether it's a JMU or a Blue Ridge professor, it could be a practicum student, student-teacher, it could be someone in our community, a community partner, coming in as well. So, or it could be a paraprofessional and working, or a special ed teacher working in the classroom. So again, it's great to have this, this is kind of a look at the workforce redesign where we have a number of adults in wrapping arms around kids and saying, here, all these adults have eyes on you and are here to help you and support you. So this is what the sample schedule would look like. So again, they would be in lab school for half of the day. And then the second half of the day, they would be able to take their other classes. It'd be more of a traditional schedule. They could have a math class, or they could be, if they're double-blocked math, they would have math during that same day or same time period each day. They can still have their electives or special ed resource as well. It's important that planning for our teachers, so in the morning during that lab school, it's going to be like a flexible planning for the teachers in the lab school, but that's really, we think, to plan for their other classes. They have other classes to teach in the afternoon. And then in the afternoon, our lab school teachers will have planning time together because they need to have that time to get ready for their next projects or whatever it may be. Sample schedule for 11th and 12th grade, Dr. Zoo Gelder already talked about the different opportunities, so students going to JMU and Blue Ridge on their campus, taking courses. If they want to go to MTC or apply for governor's school, again, all those opportunities are still there. Or if they choose to go back into the traditional setting, they can do that as well. And then you can see what the rest of the day may look like. If they're staying in the lab school, it's more of a traditional schedule for the second half of the day. So that's a lot of information at once. What kind of questions do you have for Dr. Zoo Gelder?
I would like to, I would like to point out, thank you, Mrs. Abernathy, even though it says 40 slots on there, we actually have 50 slots at each school. And so, you know, it's kind of like prizes are limited, first come, first served for the prize. So we're very excited that at East Rockingham, we are already over the capacity with the interest that we've received, and we are almost there at Broadway. This first year, we're expecting 100 students. That's 50 at each school. Those 50 at each school will become 10th graders, so we'll be able to have 50 at each of Turner Ashby and Spotswood thereafter, and we do hope to build capacity to up to 600 kids over the course of the contract.
Did you say you went to Montevideo?
Was that just to get for the following year, or was that to bus kids from Montevideo down the...
To Broadway.
To Broadway.
To Broadway, yeah. So Dan Sanders, yeah, Dan Sanders, he presented there, and he said that there were... So Dan Sanders, yeah, Dan Sanders, he presented there, and he said that there were a lot of kids interested, about 20-something kids there. Yeah.
The, the time that they'd spend at Blue Ridge JMU tuition-free, they'd still get credit for that. So if they went on to pursue a degree, they'd already have those credits, correct?
That is correct.
That's an awfully nice perk as a parent who's got two heading to college. Thank you for that.
How long is the state planning on funding this for?
So we've gotten clarity from the state. They're funding it for four years. This will carry all of the kids from ninth grade through 12th grade. Thereafter, we've built into our plan, sustainability plan. You may or may not know that the JMU College of Education is the highest earner of grant dollars than any other college at JMU. And so being, I always have to get that plug in there. And so, you know, being that we can leverage those resources as one example, our advancement team is already behind this. We've already talked with Dr. Shiflett about ways that we can continue sustaining this. So we feel very comfortable with the sustainability plan.
What's the estimated cost per year for this program?
So the estimated cost per year is actually a per pupil model. So in the first year, it's about $8,400 per pupil. It goes down to $5,600 per year in year two and stays at $5,600 per year.
That's year two?
Correct.
If, if somebody wanted to start this in 10th or 11th grade, would they be able to, or do you have to start in ninth grade? And if you don't, then there's no other opportunities?
That's a great question, and parents have asked that same question. We prefer that they start in ninth, but it doesn't inhibit them from starting in 10th. Of course, you know, given the slots that we have, the precedent set for ninth graders, you know, they would occupy those slots if they wanted to continue.
And then, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I was just curious about transportation in 11th and 12th to all of these different locations. Is that student provided transportation?
No, actually, that's a very good question. And we've been able to work that out with Dr. Shiflett as well and the transportation team. So you may or may not know that Massanut and Tech is like the Rockingham Transportation Hub. And so from Massanut and Tech, we will be able to have transportation provided by Blue Ridge Community College from there to go to Blue Ridge. From Massanut and Tech, transportation will be provided to JMU for the JMU portion. And then, of course, Massanut and Tech is already there, and whatever Governor's School model was there would continue.
Would you describe this as what you would call project-based learning? Okay, and so any ninth grader is eligible. You have a certain number of slots. But what if I am a ninth grader or an upcoming ninth grader, and I'm reading on like a fifth grade level? What is being done for those students in ninth grade that's going to help them learn to read?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the criteria for getting into the lab school are, are you a resident of the Commonwealth of Virginia? That's it. So we have to accept anybody in the lab school who is a resident of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Of course, we look at their physical address, you know, if they're zoned for East Rock, they would go to East Rock. Because of this partnership model, we've already built in that if they qualify for sped services, the sped services would follow them into the lab school as well as English learners. The benefit of the English, the geography, the science, and the health and PE teacher working together alongside with the experts in teacher ed at JMU and Blue Ridge, those kinds of supports will be provided for the teachers to also understand how to support those who might not be reading on grade level, and also the additional professional development that they otherwise wouldn't get as being in the school.
It just seems like, it just seems like a reach to me if we can't catch them from sixth to eighth grade and get them reading on level, that we're going to send them into high school to do project-based learning. This is a big concern to me, and I'll just be honest, and I don't know what anybody else's opinion on this board is, but I'm not a fan of project-based learning. And it's really, you know, I think when they get older and they're in 11th grade and they're, you know, you can see that distinguishing of who the kids are going to be that are going to do well at MTC, who the kids are that are going to do really well going to college. In ninth grade, it's just, it's such a reach for me to say that it's okay to just throw them all in this one big bundle together when they're not reading on level. And, and there's many of those that we have. And I remember when Governor Youngkin started talking about this, and I wasn't a fan of it then, to be honest with you. It was one of the things that I disagreed with him on with the lab school. So I don't, it, this is, it's a little bit concerning to me, to be perfectly honest.
I could say, you know, just one, one other thing to that. And, you know, having been an educator for 26 years, we always do a balance in, in classrooms. And so while project-based learning is the essence of, rather than reading about science, we're actually going to do it, but we're also going to read about it, and we're also going to write about it. And so that's what good teachers do. So, you know, today, students are entering high school not knowing how to read, and so we're helping to support them along the way. And that would just continue in the lab school.
What I may add, if I could, just because I've been a little bit of part of work on this for the last couple of years. In this model, it, I want to understand, it's not going to be the kids walk in and they have a, they have a project day after day after day. This model's unique in a situation where maybe during this block of time, the English teacher takes a certain group of kids who needs help, right, and works with them, maybe a parapro does, maybe it's a reading professor from JMU or someone from Blue Ridge Community College. But it's about building this, this flexible space where we can move students around and give them what they need. So in my opinion, right, not, you know, not to, you know, just to give a different thought here, would be, this would be a better place to put students who are struggling. Because now, if we just, again, we have kids who go to the high school, maybe who are struggling to read their freshman year, putting them in a traditional classroom probably isn't going to help them, right? Here's a situation where we have some flexible time where kids can be, maybe we take everyone to the auditorium and say, you know what, I got to give you some direct instruction for 30 minutes on this thing, whatever it is. Maybe it's environmental science, right? And after that, I'm going to have a group over here working on a particular project, and a group over here working on a particular project, and we've got a group over here that needs some help, maybe with, with reading and writing or whatever. So the idea is about building flexibility to meet the needs of students, right? Whether they're, you know, again, could be an EL learner, could be a special ed student, just gen ed student who's struggling. So I think in some ways that this actually gives students a better chance who would be struggling than maybe just a traditional classroom. And again, not everything, not, not, it's not going to be project-based learning from eight to 11:30 every day. There's going to be variations of what we do. There's going to be direct instruction. There's going to be practice. There's going to be times when, you know, we've said this, when the health and PE teacher says, we got to talk about something that's health-related, and, you know, it doesn't really connect with water quality. So here we are, talking about that particular topic, hitting those standards. But gives us, I think, again, just a lot of flexibility. And when you think about the support that we'll get from, again, Blue Ridge Community College as well as JMU, I think we'll have more hands on deck to support some of these students. I, I think it's just a, a different approach that would nicely, in some ways, be beneficial to us.
We could hold all our applause to the end. I would appreciate it. We're just talking up here, so.
Do they get, what about grades?
Yeah, so they, feel free to speak. They would be able to get the same grades they otherwise would get. So it'll show up on their transcript, English IX, this is the grade they get. Don't speak more to that.
That's accurate. It would look just like if they were in a traditional classroom, what their grade would be on a transcript. English IX grade, environmental science grade.
Yeah. And, and I want to add too, when we talk about students who would choose to do Blue Ridge or JMU their junior, senior year, we're talking about concurrent enrollment. So students would get the credit from Blue Ridge or JMU for their college transcript, but at the same time, it could count towards a, a high school credit that they would need for a high school graduation. We have students who already do that. They, they on their own enroll at Blue Ridge Community College and take the courses concurrently. The, the difference here is someone else will be paying the tab for these students. So that's one of the benefits.
So what is, what is the estimated cost at the end of the four years? I mean, I know per pupil is $8,400 their first year, you said, $560, but what, what are we thinking?
Yeah, the total, yeah, the total cost of the contract that the VDOE will be sending us the funds for is we get $1 million in startup funds for year zero. We're in year zero right now. And then years one through four, it totals 7.9 million. So we'll be receiving $8.9 million in total.
And what do you, I mean, what, what are we thinking that it's going to cost the county after the four years? I guess that's where I'm at now. I mean, I can't, I can't, although you, you talked about the grants at JMU, now that'd be only JMU taking that grant, will Blue Ridge also be applying for that grant as well? And what do you, what do you think the estimated cost is going to be on the county to run this program?
Well, the cost is really that, you know, that per pupil figure. One of the ways that the budget has been built is that everything that comes into the lab school is poured back into the school division. So for example, the teachers who are a part of this, they will get a supplement, and it comes from the funds from Governor Youngkin. The teachers will otherwise be employed in the school division. So at the conclusion of the contract, they'll keep their employment in Rockingham as normal. They may or may not get the same supplement that they have gotten for participating, or they may not get any supplement, you know, depending on what the budget looks like at that point. As far as the tuition costs for Blue Ridge and JMU, we have a very creative way of looking at tuition structure for this kind of programming. If you're familiar with our School of Professional and Continuing Education, we have built partnerships for dual enrollment specifically where the tuition is significantly reduced. I know that Blue Ridge has a certain cost that's reduced for those participating in dual enrollment. And, you know, the expectation is that we would all come together, kind of figure out what we could do, how many students we could continue supporting, and how the program could be sustained.
Okay. I think that's going to be my biggest question going, just going forward, is how it's able to be sustained, and then how much it's going to cost the county going forward.
Yeah. From a school division perspective, what we're offering for our freshmen and sophomores, it would be a matter of those supplements if we want to continue those or discontinue those, right? And, and they're, they're receiving those dollars for summer work that they're going to be doing, curriculum planning and, and those types of things. So maybe after four years, that is not needed, or is not as great, or whatever. So that, that cost would be minimal. It would be, I think, putting our brains together with JMU and Blue Ridge Community College in year five to figure out the tuition piece, right? That would be the piece, right?
Thank you. Any other board members?
I've had, I've seen this from the beginning, and I, at the beginning, I had a hard time wrapping my brain around what we were really doing. So I want to tell you a story, and you tell me if that's where we think we're headed. I was in a classroom, I was asked to speak on Ag Science Fair to a fusion class, and some kids expressed interest in doing Ag Science Fair. So I worked with them in a small group while the teachers taught the general classroom on the other side of the room. And I was giving the students, okay, this is what I need you to do, and I need you to write three paragraphs on, I need you to do some research on what you're thinking about doing, and then write, find three sources and write a paragraph on each source. The kids are like, okay, paragraphs, okay. And then one of the girls said, oh, wait, we just did this in English class. And she pulled out her stuff from English class and put it down and said, this is how you write a paragraph. I'm like, that is perfect. So they're using their English skills, they're using their science skills, and they're using outside people to have more people there to help supervise the kids and to help guide the kids and provide one-on-one to the kids. Is that what we're doing here?
That's a great way of describing what we're hoping to see in the lab school.
It was super cool to see in person. So, but that, that's kind of what we're trying to accomplish here. That's, that's awesome. So thank you all for that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I just, I scanned the QR code, and it looks like this is very, like encouraged that parents are very involved with the students. So I'm going to totally get what you're saying, Holly, where you're like, I want to make sure they're getting everything, but it sounds like this is, the parents are asked to walk through this with the student to make sure this is the right thing for their kid. I was able, I didn't finish high school here, but I was able to do a program not similar to this because this is way more extensive, but where I was able to go off campus. I had to provide my own transportation, which is why I asked. So it was limited to people whose mom would let them borrow their car and stuff like that. But it was a really cool opportunity. And I think this is a really cool opportunity, but again, I had to ask my parents, can I do this? Can I borrow the car on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, like, to drive to this location? So I do like this, and I assume, you know, to do this, it's with parents and kids consenting together and saying, yeah, we want to be a part of this, not just the kids like, this sounds like fun, I'm doing it, whatever, right?
And Mrs. Cave's point earlier was, you know, really good point because at some point, at, well, at any point, if we discover that the lab school's not really the best fit for, you know, at this time, for this particular student, then we wrap support around that, figure out what is best. But of course, you know, what good teachers do is they try and help the student figure it out with what they have where they are.
Any other questions, comments? Dr. Abernathy? Dr. Bryan, sorry, last name?
Zoo Gelder.
Zoo.
Zoo Gelder.
Gelder, all right, all right. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Appreciate all you've done. And Dr. Shiflett, appreciate your time as well and heading down to Richmond and doing this as well. I remember that. And I would look to hear, or see you again, I guess, one more time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Now you can applaud if you want to. All right. Next on our list tonight for information is supplementary materials policy, and I believe Ms. Hurst has that update.
Yes, I just want to share an update tonight on where we are at on our book policies. We had anticipated being ready for action tonight, but we're just not there. We're still looking through the feedback that was provided by our community, parents, teachers, librarians, community members. So we're still sifting through that stuff, taking a look at the feedback provided, a lot of very thoughtful responses, and we appreciate the time that everyone took to provide those responses. We, this, those kinds of things help us kind of see how things are being interpreted. We know when we're looking at the policy and when we kind of crafted the policy, where our hearts and minds were, and then to see some of the feedback that was coming back out of the community, that it just made us go, whoa, that maybe wasn't the interpretation that we were looking for. And so we're circling back around to kind of clean up some things. I would expect that Ms. Cave and I are probably going to meet with our new counsel, new attorneys to get their take on this policy, make some adjustments as needed. And then I'm hoping we'll have, we'll have the policy ready for action on April 8th. So that's our next board meeting.
Any questions, comments on that, board members? All right.
I do, actually, I would like to thank, thank Ms. Cave and Ms. Hurst for doing that. I really appreciate you putting it off a little bit, pumping the brakes. We had an overwhelming response, about 350 respondents on the survey. So it was a lot to get through. I tried getting through and I didn't get through it. So thank you. Thank you for doing that.
To be more thoughtful, so, yeah.
I would just say, yeah, it was 347 comments. And the reason, and we are, I don't know that I would say that we're pumping the brakes. I think we were in a hurry with this because the community wanted it, because if there were books on the list that they want it back in the classrooms, we want those, you know, after going through a review committee, if they needed to go back in the classrooms, they could quickly, and then if not, then not. But we really were doing it as a service to the community to get an established policy. And we look at other counties that were taken one to two years. I don't want to spend that kind of time because I do believe we have other pressing matters in Rockingham County, such as, you know, student conduct and things like that. And, and of course, putting, you know, lyri- And, and of course, putting, you know, literacy and education at the very top of that list and just getting past some of these bumps in the road on the way. But that was the only reason that we initially were trying to get things done quickly, but never for any other reason other than that. So we definitely are combing through every single comment, and even, even just the little ones that, that, you know, people say, well, you know, I think you said should here, but maybe you should have said shall, you know? And I'm like, you know what, I agree with that. And then, you know, there are words like that, because every word matters, right? One word can change the whole meaning in a policy. And so we want to be, we want to have a good policy. We want to have it written well. And so those are just kind of the things that we were looking at, even the little bitty things, comments that were submitted, and we were definitely paying attention to, and that's another reason why we're, you know, trying to take our time on it and do it right and take everyone's opinion into consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Cave, and thank you, Ms. Hurst, for all the time you've put into this. I'm, I'm, thank you, guys. I'm, I see Mr. Reed sitting over there today. I saw the trees at Spotswood, saw you out there today, looking good, everything's looking good. I'm, we're gonna take a five-minute recess and come back and go into our public comments.
Thank you, everybody. I must send my kids out before public.
Yes.
All right, we're gonna begin our public comments and we'll get started there.
Again, address, I don't have the, let me pull it up real quick. Just kind of want to go over the rules for public comment, just briefly, tonight. I'm, let me pull it up. Public comments, here we go. Okay, I pulled it out, yeah. I'm, mostly just be kind, let's just start there. I'm, so the first one on our list tonight is Haley Hodges.
Hello, Chairman Cross, Dr. Shiflett, school board members, I apologize for my nerves, it's been a while since I've spoken publicly, publicly. My name is Haley Hodges. I grew up going to Harrisonburg City Public Schools and all my family living in Rockingham. I drank from the hose and wandered around mass expanses of acreage and read any old books lying around with zero parental oversight, just like many of y'all. Now, my husband and I have three kids in Rockingham County Public Schools. Tonight, I'd like to talk about government overreach. Let me breathe. We are all very different, but we all love the valley that we call home. And there is another single yet important thing we can usually all agree on. Most Americans will tell you that they do not want big government involved in their way of life, their decisions, and their children's upbringing. We can all happily nod and agree with that, yes. Republicans, Democrats, Muslims, Christians, atheists, we all want to keep the government from disrupting or sticking their agenda-driven fingers into our daily lives. This is where the actions of the school board are concerning. I'll be honest, I'm a young parent, my kids are still in elementary school, and I didn't pay a lick of attention to the school board until I saw some guy burning a mask on Facebook. Hi. So now I pay attention. And now we all say, please, big government, stay out of our lives. And then a governing body bans books, but only books that they choose. And then our governing body creates a list of trans kids, for what reason? And then our governing body changes our legal representation that we as taxpayers foot the bill for, and then our governing body refuses to answer any questions, they just laugh at us. For a board that is promoting transparency, all I'm seeing is a board putting their dominating fingers into a whole bunch of issues that most of us would rather keep the government out of. Does any parent in the world want books and knowledge yanked from their children's hands? I'm sorry that you want to raise children with zero knowledge of other walks of life, but the rest of us want our children to learn and experience what the world has to offer, and as a young mind, reading opens that door. Does any parent want their child on a government list? That is absolutely insane to me, that any parent whatsoever would be okay with their child being added to a list that a governmental body is keeping for God knows what reason over a name. The last thing I would like to add is that I filled out an official media request form for the Holy Bible to be immediately pulled from all shelves because of the sexual obscenity and violence. Myself and two other parents have done this. This was in January. I am still waiting for even just a response from any school board member, but instead I see them laughing about banning the Bible on Facebook. You're attempting to shut down everyone who doesn't agree with you with your disgusting governmental overreach. And finally, our state's motto, sixtemper tyrannus. Thank you, yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next on the list is Michael Stempel.
Evening, board, Dr. Dr. Shiflett. I'd just like to recognize two excellent educators in Rockingham County. I haven't heard public recognition, Donna Roderick, librarian at Cub Run, and also Jessica Kida, I believe, from Elkton Middle School Librarian. I think it's perfectly appropriate to recognize those librarians in the context of we're talking about banning books, like we have excellent librarians in our county who are knowledgeable and who have presented, presented information to you all on how to present policy, and you have ignored what they have said. These are award-winning librarians. All right, let's talk about character counts, because that's important, right? Character counts, trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. Those are the pillars of character counts and the RCPS adheres to. I've seen these characteristics reflected in the students of RCPS and their support people, as I've been privileged to have seen multiple school board meetings at local schools where these students, teachers, custodians, assistants, volunteers, and others have been recognized. I wish I could say the same about some on this board. Some on this board have been proven to be untrustworthy when it comes to facts about the implementation of book bans and reasons behind changing legal counsel. As, as a tax-paying citizen in Rockingham County, I want to know why. Why did the, did the board implement a ban of 50 books without any formal complaints made to standing board members? Public statements made by board members, board members have indicated that no such records exist. Foya requests have indicated no such records exist. Again, no formal complaints by parents about any of these books that are on this list, no formal complaints, there are no records that exist. Why is, and why is the board using Virginia Law 22-1-6 to justify its policy regarding supplementary material when the law itself, also Governor Youngkin, have indicated that the provisions of this act shall not be construed as requiring or providing for the censorship of books in public and elementary schools, and second, public elementary and secondary schools? I have copies here to hand out to you to remind you for Virginia Law 22-1-6 for your reference. I also have copies of the first amendment of the Constitution. As it is clear to me, this board has trouble understanding basic protected free speech. This board has chastised the media for reporting facts and has, and has it has misrepresented the truth. This board has an integrity problem, and I pray that this board will start telling the truth and stop hiding behind lies and deception.
Mr. Stempel, you can hand, you can give, they'll talk those right there, she'll do it for us afterwards, thank you. Next on our list is Nancy Basset. I forgot to mention one, we get the 30 seconds, you may hear a little ding, so that gives you just a heads up.
I don't think I'll need that, but, thank you. So, school board, Dr. Shiflett, I'm Nancy Basset, president of the Rockingham County Education Association, and I wish to speak on the library policies. And I have three points for this. First, it's ill-conceived. These policies claim to pay, to place parental input in a paramount position. However, all existing policies in practice have always respected the parent wishes and values, notice was given, permission is sought, and alternatives are provided. In practice, these proposed policies in their inception have shut parents out of the process and let the views of, let the views of a few limit the liberties of all. It's also ill-defined. I don't have the time allowed here to quote all of the semantic issues in these policies, but anyone attempting to sort through them can see that there are numerous contradictions, vague terms, and unclear wording. This level of murkiness leads to inevitable problems with implementation. And the third point is, it's unrealistic to implement the way you have them. There are more questions and answers in these policies, from how the committees are selected, to what happens to the materials in the meantime, to whether the committee is even expected to read all of the materials they are reviewing. How is an individual teacher or a librarian expected to sort through this when there are such glaring issues at the building and the county level? It is irresponsible to vote this policy into practice with no clarity or plan for implementation. And I want to leave you with an analogy. Virginia sets its laws for teen drivers from when they can start practicing, what hours in the day they can drive, and how many passengers they can have in the car. While one family may decide on an appropriate additional limitation for their teen, maybe such as to put their cell phone in the trunk before transit, based on that individual's personality or maturity level and that family's values, it is not permissible or appropriate for that family to have their neighbor's teen do the same. These policies open the same issue. One family cannot tell another what their kids can or cannot read, or can or cannot see. This is a public school system. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the school board. Michelle Roat, and I have over 25-plus years of caring and volunteering for the students of Rockingham County Public School. I object to all three proposed school board policies regarding challenged supplementary materials, but I particularly object to the section of policy 2 ABB describing the procedure for challenging books that, quote, "do not otherwise contain sexually explicit material", unquote. What does that refer to? Is anything up for grabs? Is it books containing references to murder, rape, emotional abuse, or mistreatment of children? That would effectively wipe out the entire works of Shakespeare and Dickens. Instead, it seems expressly designed to allow parents and community members to challenge any books with LGBTQ racial or gender-themed themes because they are politically opposed to them, not because they are actually dangerous to students. The policy's challenge review procedure is also cloaked in secrecy. For example, it says that three parents, guardians, or community members will serve on both the school-level and district-level review panels. I would like to know who will select these individuals and how? How will the board ensure that these challenged books get a fair hearing? Will the community members be public? The procedure also says that the district-level committee will provide a recommendation to the superintendent or designee. Will each recommendation be made public? Further, it says that the superintendent or designee, designee will make a recommendation, and if the person who complains disagrees, they may challenge that recommendation and seek the school board's review. Why? According to the policy, at this time, each material has gone through a school-level review, a district-level review, and their superintendent's decision. Why can a complainant then bump it up to the school board if they don't get the result they want? And will the school board's recommendation be made public? Finally, what role will the students play in the process so that they can learn from it? Can a student challenge a book? And a student over age 18 serve on the review committee? I do not feel these policies are necessary because we already have policies in place at the school level and excellent librarians who have expertise in this area. But if we are to have a new policy, I would like these questions to be answered so that it does not appear to be a ploy to remove books with LGBTQ themes or characters. Thank you.
Jacob Kuhn.
Thank you, all members of the board. I would like to mention some things that I have been experiencing myself. People have been labeling me and implying People have been labeling me and implying me to be immoral simply because of the people I associate with and the types of people who identify themselves as like LGBTQ and stuff. And I feel that's an unfair assumption to make because not only am I an Eagle Scout, but I'm also involved in extracurricular activities. And I hope that I am moral. However, I cannot myself be the judge of that. And I feel that it is good to have different opinions and to know people from all different walks of life, which is something I try to do so much. I love having discussions with people who have different opinions than me and have different views than me. I enjoy that, and I think that's something that everyone should do. Everyone should go and talk to someone who doesn't feel the same way as them because it expands their horizons and lets you have so much, like a very rich life. It lets you have a life that's full of different opinions and different views that you can determine for yourself. And it just helps you become a better person overall. And that's where I'm going to end it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Next on our list is Will Maldondo.
Close as Maldonado. Dr. Schiffler, Board. My name is Will Maldonado, and I thank you for hearing me. I come to you on behalf of the silent majority. There's hundreds and thousands of Rockingham residents that are behind this ban. I come to you as a father and a grandfather. My daughter is about to have a family. I thank you for making this school safer because of this ban. I come to you as a veteran. I was during the Vietnam War, and there was tough decisions had to be made. I thank you for making tough decisions. You're in a war. You're in a war between good and evil, and I thank you for looking at the tough decisions and making those tough decisions. I've also come to you as a resident of Rockingham for over 20 years and a business owner, paying taxes to the school board system so that can function. I thank you for being a good steward for keeping improper material from the kids. We are a moral society. We have to make different decisions. I thank you for making the hard decisions. It's once said that sticks and stones may break your bones, but words will never harm me. It's a reality that in the school system, words are being tossed around, words of bitterness and resentment and hatred. There's all kind of violence within the school, even sexual connotations that are disturbing the kids. There needs to be, and I want to encourage you, to find funds to be able to develop curriculum that will teach the students how to be honest, sincere, moral, and be kind to one another, be able to forgive one another. That will change this society and the atmosphere of the school system. It's also been said that a picture is worth a thousand words. My question is to the kids, as they look at those pictures in there, what thousand words are going through them? What are they trying to fulfill as they look at those pictures? Some people say, oh, they're not going to look at anything. Well, I beg to differ. What happens to you each day as you walk, watch commercials on television with this beautiful steak that you can almost smell it and you're ready to have it? Or the lobsters just soaked in butter? Or the barbecue ribs with the ribs, just finger-licking good? What do those do to you as adults? It causes you to want to have them. And what do you think it does to the children as they look at that? And the puberty stage, their desirous to fulfill that. It's proven record that not over 90% of the felons that committed sexual crimes have addictions to pornography and issues with pornography. And I thank you for saving our children from being addicted to pornography. My question is, what if we save five or 10, maybe 20 men, be involved in pornography and commit a sexual crime? What if we only save that many? And I thank you for what you're doing. And we're final word from the silent majority. They would say to you, be strong, be courageous. The silent majority is behind you. And I would say to you, thank you for making kid, the Rockingham County kids great again.
And I want to welcome you as a Vietnam veteran and say thank you. Last on our agenda tonight or on public comments is Nathan Musselman.
Thanks. All right. I'm going to piggyback on the young man over here. I'm not from around here. I first came here for my undergraduate degree, then lived in the Middle East for about a decade before moving back here in 2011. I moved back here because I love Rockingham County. And one of the things I was especially looking forward to was rooted community. When I use the word community, I think of relations, personal relations that include qualities like respect, trust, neighborliness, mutual support. The main point I want to raise tonight is that for a community to retain such relations, to be a community in more than name only, it takes work, sometimes hard, uncomfortable work. Modern society provides a lot of easy opportunities for people who disagree to publicly express their consternation with each other, but precious few to sit down and talk with each other. Constant speculation about each other's motivations and moral character destroy trust and respect. Living snug in our respective echo chambers and social cliques undercuts neighborliness and mutual support. Our social structure doesn't do much to promote listening to or understanding one another. This is why I've been impressed by the reports of the Community Dialogue Initiative that can be found on the RCPS website under the Community tab. What I find there is insightful, hopeful, and practical, and I encourage folks to take a look if you haven't done that already. These facilitated conversations on difficult toppings topics during 2022 and 23 generated a lot of good ideas and supported healthy community relations. I encourage the school board and school administration to see those conversations as just the beginning of an institutional commitment to hold our community together across issues that would otherwise hold us apart. We can build on the successes of this initiative, rectify mistakes made, and model the community we want to be. I'm not intending to be naive here. Community dialogue isn't going to solve all our problems, nor should it be seen as a way to find agreement about everything. And to be honest, some people are just committed to their enemies. They just will not let them go. I've lived in parts of the world where those are the folks that dominate everyone else. There's a lot of, you know, disagreements and sometimes strong disagreements in our community, but things can get much worse. If we don't want them to, we're going to have to choose to work at it. If you do choose to continue the work of the Community Dialogue Initiative in some form, I'll be one parent ready to support you. In any case, I want to put myself out there to those who might disagree with me on issues. I've said a few things, for example, about the removal of the books from the school libraries. I see that issue as really a stand-in for sharp differences in social values and ideas. I find social values and ideas endlessly interesting, and I'm always looking to improve my own. If anyone wants to talk, let me know.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm in the past, I've heard people kind of groan when we get to public comments, but I do appreciate hearing from the public. For those who like what we're doing and those who don't like what we're doing, it's good to get good feedback from our public. So thank you tonight for coming and speaking during public comments. Tonight, our next and our last order in public, this public meeting is School Board Comments, and I will start with Ms. Lohr tonight.
Thank you. First of all, do we have any students in the house? Yeah, a couple of you guys' friends. Good to see you here tonight. Thank you for coming. I hope you learned something. And also, there's been a lot of news about our new legal counsel, and we haven't talked about it tonight. So can Mr. Cross, can you please explain, introduce our new legal counsel? And then also explain how we came to have new legal counsel?
I'll do that during my public comment, so. I've got a lot to say on that, so thank you. I'm Ms. Hurst. Ms. Cave.
I have a couple of questions about field trips because my area is all abuzz about the upcoming field trip to the Forbes Center. And a lot of that happened in December 2022 when most of the board wasn't here. And so I went back doing a little bit of research. And one of the last things that we heard from Dr. Scheichel on taking our third graders to the Forbes Center was in a WHSV, I guess, interview that he did. What he said was, if we do find that elements of a field trip are inappropriate, how do we prevent that from happening in the future and so on? So that's simply the process. When there are concerns, we take a look at them to figure out all the details and then respond as needed. And then he talked about in a meeting here where they put out an anonymous survey on how the teachers, the third-grade teachers felt that went on the Forbes Center field trip in 2022. There were 22 that went. He said 21 responded to the survey, and 19 of 21 teachers felt that the trip was a positive experience. 19 of 21, meaning that two didn't. And I've already had two teachers upset about going on the Forbes Field Trip, like they do not want to go. And so, and I think that's that's just something new that when you have school board members that are so connected to the community and we know most, if not all of them, that they do come to us with concerns, not as a matter of breaking that, you know, chain where they go through the appropriate, you know, what do you call it? What? Chain of command. Thank you. They go, you know, on the appropriate ladder to get an answer on, you know, something they're concerned about. And I always track them to the right place when they need to. But I am concerned, I'm concerned about going to the Forbes Center because of all of the the talk that went on the last time. And I guess what Dr. Scheichel said there, he said that's simply the process. When there are concerns, we take a look at them to figure out the details and then respond as needed. So I guess my question is, how are we responding to the Forbes Center situation that happened in December 2022? Obviously, we're going there. I see, I saw, sorry, one of the field trips that said no chaperones. And again, it was another very vague field trip permission form. No chaperones, doesn't really talk about what the dance is. And and I don't know. I think a big concern in our community was the land acknowledgement statement that was read. But I also, in going back and listening to, listening to the grandmother's complaint when she came, it was some of it was the performance. And was it appropriate for third graders? And I even, if I remember correctly, eventually, I think Dr. Scheichel came back and said, maybe it wasn't appropriate for third graders. I mean, I had teachers tell me that they're boys, not they're girls, but their boys were like covering their eyes because it bothered them. And so I guess I want to know what the performance is about. I want to make sure that we're sending our third graders because we have a lot of choices where we can send kids on field trips. So I have a lot of questions, but I guess my first is, normally, do elementary school teachers, they get to pick where they go on field trips? And why is this one mandatory? I'm being told that this was a mandatory field trip for them to go on, that they didn't get to pick it. And what was our response to the December 2022 complaint from the grandmother that was here? And I know that was a lot. And we can, you know, the best you can remember, what's your thoughts, Dr. Shiflett, on the Forbes Field Trip?
Yeah, that was a few years back. What I can say is there is an upcoming field trip, April the 5th, I think, for some of our third graders to visit the Forbes Center. It is a field trip performed by the dance, I guess, the JMU Dance students. And I think I shared that with maybe Mr. Cross. I think someone had asked for that. In terms of the Forbes Center, they no longer read their land acknowledgement statement. So that was something we had talked with them about back in the fall, and Mrs. Ford had worked on that. And in terms of this field trip, the information I had is this contemporary dance ensemble. And it talks about the particular standards that are covered. And hopefully, that information was shared. It was shared with all of our, you know, principals and teachers. And hopefully, that was shared with families as well so they could determine that they felt like that would be uncomfortable for them to to attend. I think it's my understanding that maybe you will be attending that as well to see what it looks like.
I will.
So yeah, so in response to the, whenever the 2022 or whenever that field trip occurred, we have worked with the Forbes Center with the not reading the land acknowledgement statement to our students. We felt like that was inappropriate. And then trying to clearly communicate what should be expected at the field trip. Our, some of our third-grade students did this field trip in December, and I didn't hear any, any complaint or anything from anyone, teachers, principals, anyone about that trip, so.
Okay, thank you. What about the other question? Do the elementary school teachers get to choose their field trips?
They do. Yes, I think this may be a trip that we wanted our students to have an opportunity. We partner with any given child, and they try to do something for each grade level. And this may be of what they decided would be the most appropriate. Teachers typically select their field trips somewhere just about, I would say, two or three per, almost per grade level per year. And it depends on the grade level. Sometimes kindergartners may take, you know, when I was principal at South River, we'd go to the pumpkin patch, we'd go to the police station, we'd go to the fire station, some really short field trips. And teachers are, you know, navigating that. And then, and again, the upper grades, they usually kind of limit not as many field trips, but always curriculum-related. Usually, third, fourth, and fifth will try to take sort of a longer trip, maybe a full-day trip somewhere, maybe to the Safari Park or Natural Bridge or something, just something of that of that nature. I can remember, just thinking back to my time as principal at South River, some of the trips we took. And then occasionally, they would look to do trips like to Jamestown, right? Or to DC or Richmond. And again, teachers have a lot of autonomy. Matter of fact, a number of years ago, we had made an attempt to sort of make our field trips more uniform. And so we spent time talking about every third grader should have, you know, an opportunity to go to this place. Every fourth grader should go here. And that didn't go over so well because different schools and different teachers had particular field trips they liked. So in general, yeah, they have quite a bit of autonomy. And then principals approve those field trips and try to be mindful of, again, not missing too much class time, but enriching the the learning experience in the room. So if, for example, fourth grade, we've been talking about Virginia history, taking the students to see Jamestown is really like a culminating experience for that for that particular grade level. But that may not be a good trip for first graders, right? So also thinking about age appropriateness. How long can the students attend? What's most appropriate for them?
And you answered the the next question. The school board does not approve elementary field trips, but I see that we approve middle and high school. What, is it because the principal approves or what's?
Overnight.
Overnight.
But that's the field trips that you are approving are overnight.
Because they're overnight.
So there are a plethora of, I mean, I would say, field trips, you know, ex students going out, going to, you know, do something, or maybe the students in the FCCLA going to visit, maybe going to the grocery store and pick up groceries. We get parent permission for those field trips, but we're not approving them because they're not overnight. We, the school board approves overnight field trips.
Dr. Shiflett, may I add, I believe the policy is overnight and out of state. So if they're just going out of state, we approve that as well.
Correct. And we do, I think in the policy, say that Washington DC is not out of state, although it would be, but in the policy, we say it's not.
Do they still go to DC?
Yes, I think I maybe saw where a group recently went. I can't remember, was it on the video, maybe? Getting ready to go. And I saw some pictures. I think someone posted where a group of, I don't know, seventh graders, eighth graders went to to DC.
That's awesome. Well, I just, I guess I would just like to say thank you to JMU for, you know, agreeing with us on the land acknowledgement statement. I really do desire to have a partnership with them because we are so closely knit. I mean, we're tied in with JMU. We're tied in with EMU to some degree. We're tied in with Blue Ridge. And I want us to have a working relationship, a partnership, but not at the expense of our students and not at the expense of the values in our community. So that's sort of why I brought this up tonight. So that's sort of why I brought this up tonight. And I think that it would behoove all of these colleges and just different institutions that we work with to always keep our county values in mind when, you know, we have our students coming to your places. And so anyways, I appreciate you, JMU, for taking care of that for us, and look forward to this performance in April.
All right, is that it? All right, Ms. Burgley?
So I know that Holly did bring up Mrs. Roderick when she did her highlights, but I was informed that Mrs. Roderick, Ms. Dana Roderick, who's our Lucy Sims Educated of the Year, is a District Two resident. So I'm going to claim her in District Two, even though she's on the East End at Cub Run. And I just wanted to congratulate her again, but I will claim her in my district. So congratulations and thank you. I hope she's watching. And then I also just wanted to say happy spring break, and I hope everybody's having a safe, happy, good, fun spring break. We have no plans, so I hope everybody else is doing something fun.
Bus driver training.
Listen, and I have to say, I looped Jackie into, Mrs. Loh into bus driver training, and then my husband couldn't take off. So I am going to be at the next bus driver training, and she's kind of prepping me ahead of time on what to expect. So I'm excited for that, so just.
And I do appreciate you getting the ball rolling on that, because I had been asking for years, can I please do bus driver training? And when you were like, yay, let's do it, we got that ball rolling, so thank you.
And I did, I did expect when JMU, you know, they were like, well, what's the transportation situation like? Because now, here we go, I'm going to see you all the time running around. That's right, that's right. Anyways, I hope everybody has a good spring break.
All right, Dr. Shiflett?
No, thanks, I'm good for now.
Sure. All right. This may be a little lengthy, but I have prepared this tonight, and I do want to talk about our legal counsel and get into just a little bit of things, some rumors and things that's been going on, and address those tonight. So first of all, I hate to talk about this in public, and I hate to take away from our main purpose, which is our students. But since the Daily News Record has made this a controversial topic in our community, I feel like I need to address it. Their educational reporter with the Daily News Record is publicly being championed by the left to constantly report negatively about this board. Excuse me, it's my time to speak. It's my time to speak. It's my time to speak, the next time you interrupt me, let's stop. It's my time to speak, I gave you your time to speak, it's my time to speak. Thank you. Where was I? Let me see where I was at. Tonight, I feel like I need to address what's been said on the left. Like I said, the left is championing this reporter constantly about this board. If you don't believe me, all you have to do is go and search on social media and those who are actively fighting against this board. This reporter also had pinned to the top of her Twitter page for months, the hit piece she wrote on Board Member Hurst and Board Member Cave before the 2023 elections. And the hit piece was on their supposed involvement with a Christian action group called City Elders, which group has been down to the state level invited by Delegate Chris Runyon and who they opened up in prayer for the state. So this is not some secret society group. But she had pinned to her Twitter page for the longest time, this page that was negatively, trying to have a negative impact upon the election, but it didn't work. And it's still not working. I would say two-thirds of its readers see clearly what's going on. The first story that this news reporter wrote on about our newly-elected school board called them highly politicized. When I confronted this reporter about her biases towards this board, she said they were highly politicized because they were endorsed by the Republican Party. I asked this reporter why she's never reported the city school board members as highly politicized, because the city board recently endorsed their members as their Democrat candidates. In response, I did not get any response from that comment of why she has not spoken out on the city board on why they are considered highly politicized when they've also been endorsed by the Democrat Party. Only thing I can come away with that is that there's two standards in reporting when it comes to Democrats and Republicans. So let me say, the elected officials sitting here tonight at this dais, we work for the people. And the school board's attorney works for us. The board felt like Bakken and Rose did not have the board's best interests. And over the past couple of months, circumstances have risen that have caused the board to question our board attorney relationship. Trust is an important factor with legal counsel and representation. The board had doubts about that trust, so we decided it was in our best interest to hire someone we trusted. Daniel Rose with Litton and Sype is an excellent attorney. He's a trusted community member and is a veteran of the United States Air Force. Litton and Sype has also been a trusted legal firm in Rockingham County for over 150 years. We've had conversations with Mr. Rose and trust him and the firm he works for to represent the Rockingham County School Board in all our matters. Transparency, so let's talk a little bit about transparency tonight. The way we went about terminating our relationship was not illegal or a violation of board policy. The board was in agreement to terminate Bakken Rose and hire Litton and Sype. I had conversations with board members, and within hours of sending out the email to Bakken Rose, I shared that information with Jackie Loh in a closed-session meeting. This process was also not an uncommon practice, board practice, which I have experienced firsthand over the last two years. For example, at the 2023 Pence Middle School Board Meeting, Chairman Loh, Vice Chair McQuilkin, and Board Member Folk had sought legal counsel and had Bakken Rose draft a motion to accept certain parts of Governor Yonkin's transgender model policy, while rejecting provisions B, D, and G, which had to do with hiding name changes from parents, common rights of privacy in bathroom and locker rooms, and protecting female sports from male athletes. I was not told of this motion and was completely caught off guard by the motion as Mr. Folk read it, Ms. McQuilkin seconded it, and Ms. Loh voted for it. All three of them had kept me in the dark and had not told me of their sought-out legal motion, which they had our school attorney draft. This was not an uncommon practice amongst this board and which I've experienced over the past two years. For two years, I have tried my hardest to reconcile my working relationship with Board Member Loh. I've asked her for a meeting, I've asked her for several meetings. I've asked her that her husband could attend, and my wife could attend, and we could have dinner together and try to work over our differences over supper. And I've never once had that reply, say, let's sit down and work for our students. Instead, Ms. Loh has spoken negatively about me in front of students at FFA events. She's misled the public about me refusing to attend meetings over B, D, and G in Yonkin's model policy. And she yelled at me to shut up after a three-hour team-building meeting at JMU. So, yeah, it's funny, but when you waste three hours of your day going through a three, through a team-building process, and you're told to shut up, it wasn't too kind. And I've never told Ms. Loh, or yelled at her and told her to shut up. So I'm not done, please, I've gotten more time left. So I wanted to go over a few, because I've been called a liar on this, and tonight, I'm going to, I'm going to set the record straight from my email accounts, which FOIA, since we've taken over on the board, FOIA has been nonstop to the point where we're probably going to have to hire a part-time worker for the community just to go over the FOIA requests for the school board itself. And so these notes are, you're welcome to them, and we, you're free to see all my highlights on these as well. So I wrote Ms. Loh on August 28th of 2023, and I requested that she would immediate, immediate meeting with legal and all school board members concerning Yonkin's transgender model policies. That was on August 28th of 2023, because we had not even brought up the model policies at our school board meeting, and they was ignoring them. Her response to me was, upon review of the model policies, it is clear to me that we cannot simply adopt the model policies as presented on the DOE website, because in many cases, they overlap with existing policies, which will create confusion. These policies also require additional training for our employees, which may not be in place at this time. Instead, Ms. Loh wanted to focus on governance training, and she wanted to finalize our pillars of character for effective board communication document before we move forward with incorporating the model policies into the RCPS policies. She stated, can you please send me some dates that you're available to meet with a mediator like Lee Wayne, as well as Lindsay? After I receive your dates, I will work to find a time. I responded back to Ms. Loh, let me get this clear, you're putting effective board communication document ahead of Governor Yonkin's model policy. I've made it clear to you that I do not believe it's best at this time to waste taxpayer money by bringing Dr. Harris, and especially after we sat through a five-hour training back in July, and you yelled at me telling me to shut up. After the meeting, you have made zero attempts to reach out to me. I did not desire to sit through more meetings, I do not desire to sit through more meetings at the expense of taxpayer dollars. On August 30th, Ms. Loh replied back to me, in order to ensure the success of creating meaningful policy for Rockingham County Public Schools, I believe we need to have a work session to discuss the pillars of character for effective board communication before we can work on integrating the model policies into our policy manual. Can you please provide with, for me, dates you are available for a work session to include a legal update regarding the model policies? Thanks. I replied, on August 30th, I'm not attending your work session. I will attend the legal session. Please let me know what time you will begin. Again, I was, she was, I was told in a public meeting at Broadway that I said I would not attend the meeting for B, D, and G. That is simply not true. Again, I went through there, asking, again, on October 9th, Board Member Loh, policy DG and H are very important to me. I will adjust my schedule to make sure we meet on these three topics. Please let me know when the board is ready to meet. So there was never a time that I said that I could not attend a meeting on Governor Yonkin's model policies, D, G, and H. And these will be, for those who want to take a, we'll give that to the school board clerk, and she can make that available for FOIA for those who want to read that. Furthermore, I saw on Facebook this past week that former board members stated we needed a RFP process for our school attorney. That's utterly absurd to think that we would put our school board attorney out for bid. Virginia Code 2.2-4344 exempts the school board for any RFP process. School Board Policy BCG also gives the board the authority to retain an attorney for legal counsel and services. This process does not have to be voted on, but rather have a majority consensus amongst the board. As far as the Harrisonburg City Public Schools are concerned and MTC, this board will do what's in the best interests of RCPS. We will also, we are also talking about whether we will be attending the emergency board meeting that they wanted us to attend on April 1st. I let them know yesterday after, they asked for the meeting on Friday at 4:50. By Sunday, the DNR has already had an article printed with quoting them and ready to shoot out on Monday's paper, and so did the Harrisonburg Citizen. And so this tells me that the Harrisonburg City School Board had no real reasons to want to be professional and to work with this board other than making this a political show for them in the paper. So we will do what's best for RCPS going forward when it goes to MTC. There, in our opinion, and in our attorney's opinion, there is no conflict of interest there. And we will do what's in best for RCPS going forward, and we will also let them know in writing what our decision will be. So, again, the school board's attorney is exactly that. It is the school board's attorney. Those sitting on this dais, that is our attorney to be able to call, and I will add, I will add this at the very end. When I came on this board, I did not have access to that attorney. My questions that I wanted to ask that attorney always had to be ran through the chair of the board. And when I took office this year as the chair of the board, the very first thing, and these board members can concur on this, the very first thing I told them, is I said, I want you to have access to our school attorney when you want to talk to them. And so they are to have access, they can have access to them and call our attorney up at any given time. They just, they just let me know that they've contacted the attorney and what they've talked about, that's all. So, again, we will do what's in best, the best entry, interests of RCPS and our attorney going forward. And we felt like Daniel Rose is going to represent us very well with Litton and Sype. With that being said, we do have reasons to go into closed session. So do I hear a motion to go in closed session tonight?
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711. A1 Personnel, Sub-Specific Public Officers, Appointees, or Employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Hearing that, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, say yes. Yes, all those opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you for coming out tonight, this meeting is adjourned.